Welcome everybody to tunnel meeting number one hundred and four. It's July second, so welcome to this third quarter, the second half of the year. And today we're being joined by Clement, Guillermo, Sugar and Spice Vanessa, Advance Amaya, Kali, Ekemini, Ese, Haley, Ian, Onyeka, OEP, and Pidoma. Thanks a ton for being here. People will drip in over time, so I'll keep admitting people in the waiting room. Um, as you can see on screen, uh, the agenda for today is a couple of updates on uh, stuff happening. Uh, we start off with uh, mentions, uh, which will be an open call today. And uh, then we have a contribution from Archives Work Group on tax, uh, tag taxonomy updates. Um, after that, a quick update on the budget for Q three. And then I do want to give a little update on the ASI token merger and connected to that, some crypto safety. Um, yeah, it's, it's a bit of a topic, uh, let's say, this, this tokenomic merger, looking on socials, uh, scammers are uh, bursting. It's, it's, there's a lot. Um, yeah, basically it feels like we should slash could uh, do something there. So I figured uh, I put it on the agenda. Um, mm hmm. Alright, some more people joining in. Welcome, welcome. Uh, writing time for a quick reminder on what the ambassador program even is and what we're doing. Uh, basically, we're a bunch of like-minded people that are in line with the Singularity in its mission and vision. And want to help uh, contribute to the ecosystem. We have a wide range of self-organizing workgroups that do this. Uh, there's really a wide variety. If you're interested in helping out, I'm, I'm very sure there's a workgroup suited for you. You can find these on the Discord server. Um, over there, we have a getting started channel, which will help you, help you get started. So do join there. Um, yeah. Popping into the mentions section of the tunnel, which right now, um, I didn't have any. So it's, it's quite open to short mentions if anybody in the room has any.
I have, I've got a super short one. Um, there's a deep funding round four survey doing the rounds. There's a version in English and a version in Spanish, and I'm just gonna plug it in the chat. Um, yeah, it's just a really simple one. If you took part in deep funding round four, or if you didn't, they just wanna know what you thought of it. So please do.
Nice. And good call out. Usually I'm, I'm up to date on deep funding callouts, but uh, thanks for adding that. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm gonna be adding to Bunny's comment, the version in Portuguese.
Nice. Spreading the wings globally, good stuff. Um, if something pops up later, uh, at the end of the call, there's uh, room for open topics, so. Yeah, there's, there's space for that. Alright, um, mm hmm. Then uh, moving to Onyeka on the Archives Work Group with uh, some updates on the tag taxonomy. I think there's a typo. It's, it's supposed to be with an O, right? Making me doubt myself, but I think it's with an O. Um, but if you want, the floor is all yours.
Yeah, thanks, Peter. Yeah, he's written O, although I won't be, I won't be the one presenting. It's gonna be Ese Williams. So she's in the room, Ese.
She is, yes. Also, I'm glad for, uh, if there's any screen sharing.
Yeah, she, she was gonna share.
Hi, everyone. Um, just give me a moment, let me, I. Okay. Share my screen.
Should be fine, yep. Quickly ninja editing the slides, of course.
Alright, um, welcome everyone. So I'll be um, giving an update on where we are at right now. At with the tag taxonomy. Um, so. Basically. Hmm, before go back into the updates, we, I think we need to understand what the project is all about. And the aim of um, of this project. So the aim is to get our archives corpus ready to use AI tooling more effectively for searches, um, dashboard insights and more. Um, so for the new people that's just joining and like missed um, our first presentation on tag taxonomy, just going to go a brief into what's a tag. So um, a tag is a type of a meta-data. Um, it's a piece of information that describes and classifies the content that it's assigned to. Um, so like keyword that you might use in a search. So uh, as you all know, we asked people to add tags in their meeting summaries. Some of them are actually called tags like this. So if you take a look at this, um, uh, what's it called now? This update that was given, you see keywords slash tags. Um, also, well, other things such as um, the names of people present, who facilitated the meeting, who documented, the date of the meeting, action items and decisions, titles of the docs that are related to the meeting content, also function as that. But I feel, but, but we felt that most people aren't aware of this. Um, cause this will actually help um, the AI tool, ASF tool, to find the information that you ask it for. So what's a tag taxonomy? A tag taxonomy just means um, the structures that tags classified into. For example, in the archives, one way that things are classified is by date. Another way is by the name of the meeting and so on. This is all part of the taxonomy of the archives. So we want uh, taxonomy to be created from the ground up by the whole community, not imposed from above. This is sometimes called folks tsunami or collaborative tagging. To do this, we collectively, we currently collect any tags that people want to add via meeting summaries at the end of this project to analyze them, look for similarities and group them. Eventually leading to a controlled vocabulary to make it easier for people to add tags in the future. So where we are at right now for this uh, project is um, we succeeded in tagging summaries from September twenty twenty-three till April twenty twenty-four. Um, now we analyze them and trying to derive a controlled vocabulary by looking at similarities and patterns in the tags that people have generated. The team found the process quite interesting and exciting. I, I for once did, because I was part of the whole process and also saw some really interesting cool stuff that's been done, you know, backdating it. But we also noticed some blockers, um, which included uh, missing documents. Like for example, you be in the, in the summary, you might state that, oh, we have uh, there's a document, they're talking about a document actively, maybe someone submitted a document or someone created a document. For uh, these document links were not added, so that it would be easier for us, for anyone looking through these summaries should, you know, resonate with what was being said and also go by distance. Um, video recordings without timestamps, difficulty identifying action items and decisions in previous summary reports, and confusion over people's names. I think uh, that's something that is really uh, that really is a big issue, because sometimes you see Vasu as Vasu in one place and see him as something else in another place. Um, you see Onyeka as Onyeka, and then you see him as Lotki Zee, and like that, like that. So um, also, um, the Archives Work Group is currently winning an award for the best meeting summary. This is to um, I were finding that some of these things are still issues in meeting summaries still there. And the reason why we actually wanting this award is to help, is to help and encourage um, documenters to, you know, have great summaries that is easily treasurable and whatnot. But checking Discord, then uh, but check this body immediately after this meeting to see who isn't making these mistakes. Yeah. So you can check Discord after now to see who isn't making these mistakes and you can easily learn from that one. So archive name equals Discord name. So people often appear in meeting summaries under several names. Their Discord name, their Dwork name, their real name. It make, it will make it hard for an LLM to find them and answer any questions about them. So um, we decided to use people's Discord names in the archives and we'll create a controlled vocabulary dropdown in a meeting summary to derive from a Discord both. For those who care, it's better for privacy and better for LLM searches. Thank you so much for um, being, uh, for listening to our update. So um, do we have any questions? I might just up share my screen.
Awesome. Thanks a lot for that. Any questions in the room? I see OEP unmuted. Go for it if you unmuted for a question. Silence. Anyone else? I'm curious about uh, what will appear on uh, on Discord. I know it said after the meeting, so you know, not gonna find anything right now, but yeah, too curious. And also Onyeka, that if you, if you don't uh, feel comfortable speaking, uh, feel free to ask questions in chat, of course. Uh, sorry if I, you wanted to mention that, Onyeka, or feel free to speak, of course. Confirmed in chat. Cool. Sorry. Alright, uh, doesn't sound like there's much questions right now. In my mind, it's awesome. The, the bottoms-up tagging, the, the folks on me, if that's the correct term, um, that's, that's really strong. Uh, can't wait for uh, for that to feed into other ones. Alright, if there's no, no questions on the topic, um. Yeah, it's taxonomy. I, I'm well aware. I, I did correct it on the sheet, but it was like the term called uh, folks on me uh, by it being based on um, what the people uh, contribute to the taxonomy. Um, alright, uh. Perfect sheet, the slides, like there's no typos or nothing, no wrong names. Right, um, thanks a lot. I guess just a quick shout out. Uh, is there, I guess this week? No, it will be next week, right?
Yeah, next week, that's right.
It's uh, Wednesday, twelve UTC. Alright, um, yeah, then moving on, um, on the Q three budgets. Um, we had a proper busy week, uh, getting all these sorted and consenting to them and objecting as well, um, figuring out how to go about everything, pretty much. Um. Earlier today, um, I was not online for, for most of the day, but uh, earlier today, we had a governance call. Um, and I was kind of secretly hoping that somebody present during that governance call uh, would be able to give a bit of an overview on, on what the current uh, status is and uh, what the next steps are. So not trying to put anybody on the spot, but at the same time, yeah, I am. Uh, I see Guillermo raising. It's nice. Go for it.
Yeah, um, so I think it was uh, successful. We always need more time on these calls. Uh, but um, as we mentioned, uh, so Felix lead the call. We went through all the concerns in this second iteration uh, for committee concerns. And um, I will share what I've shared in the channels previously. I think it was successful. The way we approached this quarter uh, deadline, pushing the deadline and pressuring all the Gits and workgroups to commit to have this consensus uh, process. Uh, approve and finish before the beginning of the quarter. So we are two days due, but still it's a great success. Um, and in my case, I'm gonna check in my current case, or in our case, for the R and D and the Latam uh, guilds, uh. It was, so the process itself, it organically pushed everybody to uh, revisit, review, reanalyze uh, not only Q three proposals, but also Q three reports. So assess, double time everything. Uh, and I have to admit, uh, for us, it was optimizing resources, uh, realizing a lot of play for improvement. Uh, this all, of course, brought discussions, uh, internally needs for consent. Uh, yeah, and when we get good with uh, how we spend the resources, we're gonna be able to deal with more resources and be more responsible or accountable for what we're doing here. So long story short, it have been a, till today, it have been a great success, I think. Um, we have the opportunity to, every workgroup, go through the concerns, present the analytics and their response. And I don't know, we, we did have the time to cover all of them, but almost all of them, and uh, I think we reached almost on every, all of them, uh, all of the Gits and workgroup consents. Um, I think some of them were still missing, um, but yeah, I think, I think it was a good experience.
Thanks a lot. Vanessa.
Yeah, I think we didn't, I mean, maybe you did after I hopped off, but I think we didn't quite get through all of them. So the next stop is probably Treasury meeting, or is it the next governance meeting, Guillermo?
Um, seeing treasury would be only Monday. I imagine the Open Gov War Group call.
That's it. Yeah, I knew there was one soon. That would be the one.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, and, and to confirm, Bunny, we didn't went through all of them. Still a couple missing before we jump off.
So I think the ones that we did get through was R and D, Latam, education and video, if I remember right. Yeah? And they were all, all the concerns were addressed and they've all gone through, right?
Yeah, and strategy we went through and we didn't go sense. So there's still one missing. I don't know which one.
Alright, um, well, so on, on a high level, um, I think looking at the quarterly budget sheet, there's still one, two, three, four, five, six, I believe seven. Um, proposals that, that didn't uh, reach consensus yet after the second iteration. And correct me if I'm wrong, but um, I believe the next.
Yeah, yeah. Spreadsheet needs to be updated after today's governance workgroup. So TiVo wasn't present, so we should go back with uh, Felix and, and do that. I think that we, we're still missing the update on the spreadsheet.
Yeah, okay. Also, you were able to resolve um, concerns raised earlier in the second iteration, which now turned it into approved. Ah.
Correct.
I see, I see. Amazing. Okay, okay. Um, yeah, looking forward to the meeting summary then.
I don't know which one was doing that, but overall, again, the, the process is organically a success. And we is to second of July, and we already have this done. Yeah.
Uh, that's, that's fucking amazing. I, I do want to thank everybody for keep uh, putting up with this. Um, you know, over the past two weeks, uh, it's been very intense on the getting proposals ready and, and also um, consenting on them. Um, however, since we did it, did this, um, now we won't have to worry about it until um, September. So that's pretty awesome. Uh, two months of, of not really thinking about budgeting. Um, and then hopefully uh, that rhythm will continue, right? Where we um, only during the last month of the quarter, we prepared a budget for the next quarter. Vanessa, please don't tell me.
It might just be worth saying that once all the consents are in, that's when we work out the final um, lowering percentage for the budget fitting, because I think if you look in the, in the spreadsheet, it looks as if we're doing it a different way that we were doing one percentage for those that were passed the first time and another one for the later ones. But that has been decided that we're not doing that because it's quite unfair. So yeah, once we know who, you know, what budgets are consented to, then we do a lowering percentage across all of them, so.
Yeah, thanks a lot. That's, that's good to uh, read it, right? Alright, um, mm hmm. Quickly checking chat, but i- if there's any questions in the room on the topic, do feel free to speak up. All clear? Everybody happy? Or, or not happy, maybe? Any comments? Before moving to the next topic, which we can. Yes, indeed. Doesn't chat, uh, that graphic with the big red font. It did its magic. Alright, well, I don't think I see anybody uh, raising hands or speaking up, so I think it's okay to move to the next topic. Wait, did I just put? Okay, there we go. Um, yeah, uh, I wanted to give a, a little update on the ASI token merger. Um, first of all, as, as some of you may have noticed, uh, yesterday, we had a bit of an issue with um, our um, X formerly known as Twitter account, uh, that has been restored luckily. Um, took quite a bit of hassle, but um, we got it back. It was not really a hack. Uh, it's honestly still a bit unclear what precisely happened, so we, we do a full um, post-mortem on that, but um, Twitter is not the easiest company to uh, well, to get to talk with a human, basically. Anyway, uh, we got the account back, so no worries there. Um, and yeah, since yesterday, um, uh, phase one of the token merger is live. So you're, right now, you're able to um, go to the Singularity DAO, that AI website and um, merge, or migrate rather, your AGIX or Ocean tokens into FAT. That's the, the very first uh, step of the process. And then during the second phase, um, you can change those fats uh, into ASI. So it's a two-step uh, process, but um, it's completely fine to only do the um, second step. Uh, this will also, during the second phase, you will also be able to transform your um, AGIX or Ocean directly to ASI. Phase one is mostly for um, let's say, technical reasons, uh, for, you know, exchanges and stuff, third parties. Uh, they wanted to have this, this order of things. Um, so yeah, for now, no real action required. You can just wait until phase two goes live. Uh, phase two also doesn't have an end, uh, end deadline. So if you want to just chill and migrate in a year from now, uh, that's perfectly fine. You can. Uh, just, yeah, in the meantime, if you want to, I don't know, uh, do any DeFi stuff, for example, uh, then you need to migrate. A small note on uh, Cardano support. Uh, originally in the uh, vision paper uh, of the Alliance, it was mentioned that uh, Cardano native migration would be available slightly later, uh, after the launch, but it, it's looking quite good. And it, it might be um, just available right when um, when it's available on Ethereum as well. Um, yeah, I felt included, uh, I felt like including this on the call, because on, on Telegram side of things, this is all that gets talked about. So I figured, uh, let's get a little, little update and uh, perhaps if there's any questions in the room on, on this uh, token merger, feel free to ask. And if not, I'd like to uh, have a little look at this, um. It's a bit of a joke. I mean, it's, the screenshot is real. Um, it's, it's basically Ben from the Asnet support team, Ben Gertzel, reaching out to people, "Oh, have you been able to migrate?" Um, I, I included this because uh, there's a big, big uptick in uh, scam attempts. And we try to warn. Uh, and upon entering one of the channels, there's always this, this kind of like a TNC kind of message, right? Like, confirm you're a human and you've read these warnings. Uh, in reality, people don't read that. And yeah, it's just uh, every day people are losing their wallet contents because of scam attempts. Um, kind of makes me feel like in, in a way, it's, it's, it's a bit of a hopeless situation where, yeah, we try to educate and we try to um, provide information and, and respond quickly and, you know, make sure people don't get scammed. Um, that just doesn't fully work always, all of the time. Uh, so I also wanted to put a little warning there. Um, you know, there, there's a bunch of basics, like admins, like the screenshots, reaching out to you. That doesn't happen. Legits admins never reach out to you. You know, that, that kind of um, basic stuff, it's um, well, I say basic stuff, at the same time, there's quite some people losing their tokens. Full contents of the wallets, you know, like heartbreaking stories uh, in my DMs on, on life savings being lost, you know, just by a message like this. Somebody sending a DM, three minutes later, you click a link, you connect your wallet. Yeah, end of story. Um, so that felt like something to, I don't know, put a little attention to, at least. And if there's anybody having any ideas on how we can more um, more effectively work against scammers, then, then by all means, do speak up or do share your ideas. You can always DM me. Um, I see some comments. Um, ah, this is on the, on the merger, um. It's gonna be automatic for those who have their tokens on DEXes, um. For example, on Binance, it will automatically turn into FAT and then into ASI. Uh, correct, except the DEXes part. Uh, Binance would be a centralized exchange, not a decentralized. So if you put SEXes where there's DEXes, then it's, it's uh, perfectly correct. Um, since the first phase only allows migration of AGIX in Ethereum, what happens to a treasury system pending phase two? Good question. Um, it's not directly affected. Um, if we want to, we can choose to not migrate before sending rewards, and then all contributors would receive AGIX as they used to. This will put then the, the burden, let's say, of um, migration onto the, well, the, the members, let's say, those who get the rewards. let's say, those who get the rewards. So in my mind, I think it would make sense that once the ASI token is live on Cardano, we start distributing it as rewards within the program. But this is something I don't want to make like a centralized decision on in any way. If we, it would be good to open up the discussion and have some thoughts on that, if people would prefer to receive AGIX and then, yeah, individually be able to migrate it? Or if they feel we should do it on treasury level before sending the reward distribution? Colleagues, losing all tokens every single week? Yeah, we talked a bit before on, I do still think you need a full system reset, to be honest. Sounds to me like you have some spyware going on, so any wallet you make, yeah. By default, this has issues because, yeah. Happy to discuss this further, but I do remember recommending earlier that a full system reset would be the way to go, I feel. Clement, you have your hand up? Go for it?
Yeah, okay, so I wanted to say, Peter, that it always, we're gonna be having the two options you talked about happening simultaneously. And that is maybe having to wait for the treasury to have their upgrades to the ASI before we send out rewards pending the phase 2 completion. And secondly, we have people who already have AGIX. Most of us on this call have got AGIX in our wallets and Cardano. So basically, both is gonna happen. I'll just suggest that probably pending rewards could be aggregated and maybe after the final phase 2 completion, then we just get to receive ASI tokens and then, you know, we get to reduce the workload on us. So that's just my idea though.
Yeah, makes sense. I think at some point, we need like a, well, I mean, it's a treasury discussion, right? I'm not looking for the final verdict on this topic right now. But what does that make sense to me? Anyone else in the room? Any opinions on this? Should we stick to distributing AGIX and then have users convert it? Or once available, do the migration first and then distribute the ASI token? Go for it, Clement, I see your hand. I'm not sure if it's all hands.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. I just wanted to add as well that maybe we would need to increase community communication around the whole merger/migration thing. I've been on Twitter and, you know, there's still a lot of confusion amongst a lot of persons on what they need to do. And even if proper guidelines are distributed, some persons might still not be able to access the relevant information because we would have multiple false information spreading at the same time, of course, which will avoid scammers. So maybe I'll just advise that we increase efforts around the community communication and communicating the right thing and the right steps that will be involved, you know. So maybe we could have like one repository where we direct everybody to go to, and then we trust that particular information to be the one which is legitimate for everyone to follow for the whole migration process.
Yeah, fair. There is some information out there on superintelligence.io, which is the ASI Alliance website. There's guides on how the migration works. Basically, if you're, there's basically two options, right? You either have tokens on an exchange or you have them in your own wallet. In the first case, most of the exchanges support the migration, so you don't have to do anything. You just wait, and then, once completed, you see initially fat and then once phase 2 goes live, you see ASI tokens in your wallet, in your exchange account, rather. The alternative, if you have tokens in your wallet, and this also goes, if your exchange doesn't support the migration, for example, right now, Coinbase, Kraken, Binance US, there's a theme among these three, they're American. They don't support the merger. And in that case, you have to withdraw to a personal wallet. And so then you're at the second option, if you have tokens in a personal wallet. The process is relatively straightforward. You connect to the migration websites with your wallet. You click the amount you want to convert, and you click convert, and then that's it. Yeah, I don't know, it's almost silly how relatively small the amount of steps needed is and the tons and tons of discussion and questions asked all day long. So, yeah. I think as a single source of truth on how to do things, the ASI website, so superintelligence.io, would be the best place. Alright, quick check. Any questions or comments on the topic? Seems not. And then, okay. Actually, there is. One is phase 2 due to come into play. Originally, that was set for 15th of July. That has kind of shifted into to be confirmed, but mid-July would be a reasonable expectation there. Yeah, and again, the migration contracts, the smart contracts, will stay available for years and years without a deadline to convert by. We can't say forever, like as in the actual forever. That's just unrealistic, but close to forever, let's say. So there's no immediate rush to convert. The ratios of AGIX to ASI are locked in at 0.43 and some smaller numbers. That won't change. So, yeah, whether you convert in 2 weeks from now or in 2 years from now, you will get the same amount of ASI tokens. Alright. I think, next up on the slides, we can go to open rounds, but I do believe, quickly hopping back to the agenda, I think I screwed something up on the agenda perhaps? No, we did all. Alright, then we would move to, if my button gets there, to open rounds. And I do see Guillermo raising his hand.
Yeah, sorry to bother again, but I have to pop, jump off this in 5 minutes. And I want to share with the community this, that we agree is the right timing. So today, we have the Global Ethics Meeting. And I'm gonna share something I wrote down with a better description. So, the initiative lead by Haley and Esther with the Global Ethics Initiative is looking forward for the ambassadors' powerful helping hand. And its participation to bring the potential positive impact in their endeavor. One of the spaces that Esther and Haley at today's meeting asked me to share with everyone here is to participate and help in the upcoming virtual roundtable for the BGI follow-on. This is gonna be August 7th. More information will be later on the channels, but just to everybody be able to schedule on their agenda. And then, secondly, and I have to talk my personal experience. It was amazing in Panama, not only because I met a lot of great people, also because all the fundamentals that each one of us had, we share them and we have learned so much in 3 days, that it is something that I recommend everybody to try to be there. As the Foundation is inviting the ambassadors, it will figure out how to get there, to participate in the upcoming AGI 24 at the University of Washington, Seattle. This will be August 13th to the 16th. I'm gonna, again, throw the text with the links and the information of the event. For this, so who wants to participate from the ambassador program would not only have to subscribe on an internal spreadsheet that we will share later and be selected, we will figure out how, following our first experience with Panama. And what we need to take into account to those of you guys that want to participate is not only the availability on the calendar. As it's in Seattle, United States, not only we have problem with registrations on exchange, you have the visa issue. For a lot of countries around the world, and as we are a global community, this need to be addressed with time. Any consulate needs a 3-month period to address any expeditive visa. So if you don't have it, you figure out to address these questions to your consulate. The Foundation offers to create a special invitation letter for those to have this opportunity, and you can address with that to the consulate to have an expeditive, yeah, solution. But, so again, it's not only willing to participate, also being able to participate so you don't get frustrated down the line. And I'm gonna- And then, of course, stay tuned, we will share more information on the channels for these both events and how you can help Esther, Haley and Lilu in this endeavor and also represent the ambassadors on the upcoming events. I just share a big chunk of text there, repeating everything I just said.
Awesome. Thanks a lot for sharing it. And yeah, that's a chunk of text, but a good one. And yeah, it was really good having people over in Panama. And actually, you know, just the basics, like meeting face-to-face, when there's no Zoom in between or no agenda you need to go through, just being able to have casual talks. And, I mean, we can, you can always call each other, but that doesn't really happen that much, in my personal experience, anyway. There's always topics you need to discuss, right, or agendas, and just being. Yeah, just opened up a real, how to say? Well, yeah, you catch my drift. Like, getting in touch with the human side of each other is just really valuable in my mind. Alright. I guess if there's questions, feel free to ask. Alternatively, even, if not, there's open rounds. So if you want, there's still 8 minutes on the clock. We could discuss another topic. The floor is open. Starting to think, actually, on a practical note, maybe we could change the ambassadors@bgi discord channel into ambassadors@agi24 channel? Just to have a place for, you know, keeping it going? Alright, thanks a lot, Guillermo. Okay, I'll change that. So yeah, I mean, it's an open round, so if anybody has any ideas or questions or is new here and wants to introduce themselves, or pretty much anything goes. Now would be a great time.
Okay, hi guys. Am I being heard?
Hey, Guillermo. Yes, we can.
Okay, so I'm practically new here. I think this is my first time joining the ambassador meeting. So my name is Udoma Obu. I'm a project manager and a creative director. So it's actually my pleasure to be in this community. I think I had already introduced myself informally when the meeting started, when I said I'm Obu's brother. Pleasure to be here once again.
Awesome, and great to have you. I think I get to do an obligatory Getting Started channel shout-out. If at some point you bump into any questions, simply feel free to ask on Discord, of course. Good stuff. Anyone else? Anything else? We don't have to, we can. All a bunch of welcoming, that's cool. Alright. Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, that would be a wrap for today. Actually, before the time slot runs over, 5 minutes before that. Good stuff. That's it. Thanks all for joining in and hope to see you on one of our many upcoming community calls. I think there's 10 more this week, so you won't have to be bored. And if unable to join any of the calls, we'll talk on Discord. Thanks again. Stay awesome and see you around. Cheers.
Cheers.